Thank you. Everyone should have had a chance to review the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any changes or questions regarding the agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Tonight's agenda has been approved. Also in your packets, everyone should have received the minutes from last council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to tonight's minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Motion, motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Minutes have been approved as written. Recognition of visitors. Mr. Bogowski?
No visitors this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just to let everyone know, if you're here to speak or address the council, please come up see the clerk, grab a green card, fill out your name and address, and we'll call you up towards the end of the meeting. You will have four minutes to address the council at that time. Communications requests and informational items. Number two, recognition of Missouri Blue Shield designation by Missouri Department of Public Safety.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, tonight we're recognizing our achievement of the Missouri Blue Shield designation. I'll have Chief Calvert come up and tell us all a little bit about that, and then we'll take a photo with the mayor and myself and Commander Hayes and Chief Calvert as well.
Very good.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
So we applied for the Missouri Blue Shield. This is a grant through Governor Quixote's office. I think they said approximately $10 million could be awarded to different municipalities and, yep, county law enforcement agencies throughout the state. Was a process that you had to do. We sent ours in. The first step was the city council passing a resolution. That was the first step. And from there on, Commander Hayes and I filled out the application and sent it in, and we got approved. So we're recognized as a Blue Shield available for grant funding.
Very good, very good. We thank you for putting the effort forward and making things, making a safer community for all of us.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bogowski, would you like to take a picture?
Yep.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request from Patrick Campbell to close the 500 block of West Reed Street for a bed racing event on August 2nd, 2025.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we received this request from Mr. Campbell. I think we spoke about this at work session last meeting. This is to close one block of West Reed Street for the bed races event. This is a fundraiser for Toys for Tots. Staff has reviewed this request and would recommend approval of this request.
Okay, very good. Is this part of any other event in the community, or is this just kind of a standalone event that they're doing? Do you know?
I believe it's a standalone.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion for the approval to close the 500 block of West Reed Street?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The request has been approved. All right, number four. A discussion of the proposed annexation of newly acquired real property located in Rothwell Park.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was one parcel of property within Rothwell Park that was owned privately by the heirs of Vivi and Letha Silva. This was outside of the city limits officially and within Rothwell Park. We were able to acquire that, and we will be going through the annexation process for acquiring this into the city limits. What we'll need from council tonight is authorization by voice vote for the city manager to file a petition to have annexation. We will then have a public notice period on that and then have a public hearing on July 21st.
Okay, very good, thank you. It should be the last piece in the park that was privately owned, correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Okay, so city manager needs a motion to allow him to file a petition for annexation. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request has been approved. Okay, public hearing and receipt of bids, number five. Receipt of electrical bids for the Moberly Municipal Auditorium Electrical Redo. I believe that we had four bids that came in on that. We just need a vote to receive those, please. So we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, mark those as received. Number six. Receipt of bids for demolition for 11 residential structures within the city limits of Moberly. I believe this says 11, but we're actually reducing it to 10, correct?
Yes, later on in the regular meeting, there will be 10 that will be actually demolished.
Okay, do we have a motion for the receipt of these bids?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will mark these as received as well. Okay, tonight we do have a consent agenda as well, and that includes items seven through 11. Is there any item that anyone on the council would like to have removed for separate discussion? Nope. Hearing none, do we have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. First and only reading, please.
Bill number R 1835. A resolution accepting the bid of and authorizing contracting with Harland Electrical and Controls LLC for new electrical service at the municipal auditorium. Bill number R 1836. A resolution authorizing the purchase of real estate from Holman Holdings LLC. Bill number R 1837. A resolution accepting permanent construction easements and conveyances of real property, authorizing and approving payment for interest in real property, authorizing and approving the payment of costs for the acquisition of interest in real property related to the Wabash Heights ARPA project number DNR-SW-DZ-083E3E22938 and further authority. Bill number R 1838. A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with JT Holman General Construction and Excavating LLC for the demolition of 10 building structures. Bill number R 1839. A resolution authorizing submission of a transportation alternative program grant application for sidewalk construction along a portion of North Morley.
Thank you. Anyone on the council have any further questions or discussion regarding any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Ordinances and resolutions. Number 12, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for a hotel feasibility study with Moberly Area Economic Development Corporation. Ask if this be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, or we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for a hotel feasibility study with Moberly Area Economic Development Corporation.
Any questions from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for a hotel feasibility study with Moberly Area Economic Development Corporation.
Any additional questions? Okay, is, I did have one question. What is the timeframe on when these come back? When can we expect that?
I haven't received an answer on that specifically on this one. Say generally, in the past, it's no more than 60 to 90 days. It's not a, not a six-month study or anything like that.
Thank you. Okay, with no further questions, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
The ordinance has been approved. Number 13, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance repealing ordinance number 9884 and authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Gunner Dirk. And I ask that be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 9884 and authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Gunner Dirk.
Any additional questions from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 9884 and authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Gunner Dirk.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number 14, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance of the city of Moberly, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials. I ask it to be read twice for consideration in the passage.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Moberly, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Any questions from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Moberly, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, second? Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been approved. Number 15, a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution recording the destruction of certain local government records. Ask if this be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. First and only reading, please.
A resolution recording the destruction of certain local government records.
Any further discussion or questions from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution has been approved. Number 16, a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri, to pay expenses due between May 15th and May 30th, 2025. And I ask that be read once for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Moberly, Missouri, to pay expenses due between May 15th, 2025, and May 30th, 2025, in the amount of $1,214,993.73.
Thank you. I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Moberly, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Allison Boyd. We have a motion for the approval of the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution has been approved. That does it for ordinances and resolutions. Under the subheading, anything else to come before the council, we've got number 17, occupancy committee findings. Tom, do you want to talk a little bit about that and kind of explain the why that we're, that we did this and kind of give a little background on it?
So, you know, there was lots of questions on there of sort of how, you know, things have changed. There was a perception, I guess, that things had changed a lot, you know. What's happened, I think, really is you've had a transition of different employees, and so when they maybe see different things or how they look at things differently. So we've been trying to keep consistent. And so we had a broad mix of the group. They were all people that brought before our council and have a lot of experience, either through health department, you know, owning a lot of properties in the past or managing properties. And just trying to ask them, I said, what's your opinion? Do you know, do you feel like our housing population has been improving? Is going downhill? Does it still need attention of those things? And I think that the feedback that was given to us was that there's still, it needs to be in place. That, you know, housing is always going to be a thing of need, that we want to keep this in place. But there were some things that I feel like that they openly said, you know, we need to look at as far as doing differently to make it easier and more effective. And so, and I think in the list, you see there are a couple of the big items where having online registration, where people could, you know, file an application online, pay online, they'll have to come in and meet with them, was important. And that's something we've been trying to do across the board. Other things were for houses that were 20 years of age or less, you know, that, you know, they're automatically on a two-year cycle. So like when they pass, you know, they don't have, they're good for at least two years, where now it's one-year first occupancy change after that. And there was also a recommendation to have on there for houses that were older than that, that passed on the first cycle to get the two-year status. They thought that would incentivize people to, you know, make more effort to have the houses prepped and ready instead of having them kind of, you give me a list and I'll fix those items.
Okay.
I think those are the biggest things, but I mean, we got good feedback on our inspector. I mean, I, you know, he seemed to be consistent and wanted to have a better list of what the most common things were so that they could, the top 10. And I think we already kind of published that, but that's been provided. So we were going to put those things together. And we were going to see what the council thought about this, if they wanted to put more input into it. And then based on that discussion, we could, you know, work on all of those objectives.
Sure, sure. Does anybody have any questions for Tom regarding the, not really proposal, but the information in the packet, any specific questions? Mr. Scubick?
Mr. Mayor, Tom, on your paragraph four, you mentioned some initial concerns such as flooring conditions and the GFCIs in outbuildings. Could you expand a little bit on that, what those concerns were?
Well, the GFCIs, for example, and wet weather conditions or whether it's like on the exterior of a house or in your outbuildings are, you know, they're required to have GFCIs. And I think in the past, that probably wasn't identified by previous inspectors. And so that was one of the things that was picked up with, since Mark has started. And so it's not a new regulation, but it was new experience for some of the people, you know, that are going through the process. So that's one of the, you know, sometimes on rental properties, you know, the landlord doesn't always offer the outbuilding as part of the rental. So they're like, well, we don't use that, you know. But he really doesn't have the ability to, if it's there, it's part of the property, you know, we have to look at it. So there's been some question on that. That was one of the issues that was brought up. And the other one was on just flooring, I think, on some of the conditions, you know, where you have, you know, it does talk about sanitation and livability, you know, about carpeting and flooring. So we've had some pretty extreme examples of where, you know, we won't get into details, but I mean, we got really good pictures of some of the issues that we deal with, you know, where the carpet has heavy pet damage, you know, at DCs and stuff like that, you know, and it's not been really ever cleaned and some of it where it's been, it has to be cleanable as well. So if you've got linoleum and it's peeled back and exposing OSB board or something like that, you know, where you clean it and mop it, so that's the kind of issues.
Okay. I had heard the comment too on painted floors. Are you seeing some of that where the floors have just been painted and then that won't pass?
There were some that like have been, one specifically was OSB board, you know, which like you could paint that, but it really will warp and doesn't, you know, if you had like, I guess, hardwood, like oak floors or something like that, but the type of materials, you know, have to be non-absorbent and cleanable.
Any, any other questions for Tom regarding information in the packet? So what I, what I would like to do is, being that we just got this in this packet and, you know, haven't had much time to digest it, I'd like to table this at least until possibly next meeting, where we kind of have a chance to kind of review and talk it over and, you know, take some of these, these recommendations to heart, and then we can kind of have the public conversation next, next meeting. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. Do we have a motion to just table this until, until next council meeting? We don't need one? Okay. City manager says that we don't need one. So, Tom, appreciate your efforts in, in getting this committee together. I know there's, this is always challenging, you know, as far as codes, it's not fun, but obviously somebody's got to do it. So we'll have that conversation if we have a chance to digest it a little bit more and take it from there. So. Next on the list, consideration of approval of renewal liquor license applications for fiscal year 2025 and 2026.
At the city clerk's office presents for your consideration the annual renewal of liquor license for B&amp;B Moberly Five and Drive, Bratcher's Fuel, Casa Jalisco Pizza Works, Vertigo Event Services LLC, and the VFW Post 2654. These applications have met the required city code and the department review processes, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Anybody have any discussion regarding liquor license? We have a motion for the approval of the applications.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Liquor licenses have been approved. Number 19, public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Now would be your time. Please state your name and address, and you'll have four minutes, sir.
All right. My name's Ivan Thomas. My business is at 1550. I live over Huntsville. So I was going to talk about the occupancy thing. So did, what, why did that start? Because I maybe missed why we created that committee to look into it.
I believe the committee was, was created because there are some issues with, some people in the public felt like there were some issues with, with specific codes. And we felt like that if we brought some people that were involved in the, the community and involved in that world, they could offer some insight. So that's, that was kind of the reason behind it.
Yeah, I really like all the proposals. Honestly, we, we discussed with Tom and Mike at our Moberly Landlord Association. I think we're the only one in town. I think some folks expressed concern that nobody on the landlord association was approached about being on the committee. I think, you know, we have several hundred, I mean, several hundred units that we manage. We, we have contact with the city about this. I'm here. Me or somebody with me is here every week, multiple times a week.
Right.
And I was like, I just found out about it late in the game. But, so I mean, our main concern is like, hey, the people that are affected the most, people that spend the most money, either with occupancy permits or, you know, are being told by the city, hey, you need to do X, Y, Z to your properties, you know, should have a little bit of a voice. The president of our association is actually out of town at a conference, asked me to be here. But the main issue I had with the suggestions from the current, the current committee suggestions was the, if you pass the first time, then you would get a two-year occupancy permit. To me, I think there might may be a more, a better way of addressing the problem. I think Tom voiced the problem being, hey, don't have our inspector come to a house that's clearly not going to pass. And so we can give you a list of things to do. Does that sound right? Right. So I mean, to me, I thought maybe this is a better suggestion. Like, hey, if you don't pass the first time, you pay another inspection fee. That would motivate us to do so. But once we pass, I think two years makes sense across the board. It also might be easier to logistically manage for the inspectors in the department. If it was, hey, when you pass, you get two years. But if we have to come back multiple times, you have to pay every time we come back. Also, a larger permit fee could make more sense. Instead of $45, $100 might make more sense. And then also, the longer the period is, the less friction I think there will be with the public. I think we, the committee said that there was consistency from the inspector. But I know that Tom, when you spoke tonight, said that one of the concerns was lack of consistency. And I think that when Mike came to our association meeting, one of the biggest things I heard from folks was the lack of consistency. I mean, we've got longstanding real estate brokers that have their own brokerage here in town and landlords that have been doing this for longer than I've been breathing. And then myself, and I'm, I'm new to the game, but I've been pretty aggressive. I've got close to 100 units in Moberly. And at one point, it was close to 150. I sold several. But, so I mean, I'm affected dramatically by this. And so a lot of folks, they were saying that actually there's not consistency. And so that's my concern with the whole, if you pass the first time, then you get a two-year. Well, I don't know 100% what to expect from an inspector. And the turnover is pretty heavy. I've been doing this for a few years. There's been just as many inspectors, you know, as there's been years in business for me. And so, you know, that, that is a little bit of a concern. But if there's that much friction, I would say that the longer we can go between them, the better it is for the relationship between the public and the, and the city. So if it was three years or four years, we have houses that were built less than five years ago, and they have to be inspected.
Right.
I was going to suggest if it was built in the last 10 years, that it doesn't need inspected. Like, if, if the city said, you built this right, you know, it would make sense that there would be a period of time before we then have to have you all come in. And also, just a reminder, well under 3% of cities in Missouri have this. And yet they, they thrive without it. Not that we should get rid of it.
Sure.
But, you know, whatever we do, it's still more than the vast majority of towns in Missouri.
Well, we appreciate your, your suggestions and recommendations. And that, that's why we wanted to kind of take this under advisement, didn't want to rush into anything.
Sure.
And wanted to make sure that we had all of our ducks in the room before we made any decisions. So do appreciate you coming up. I know we, we let you go over it a little bit in the four minutes.
Well, I appreciate that.
I felt like what you had to say was important, so, so we wanted to let you, let you run with it. So.
Well, I very much appreciate it.
Yeah, do appreciate you being here, sir. Thank you. Anybody else to address the council at this time? Okay, no takers. Then I'll consider a mo, a motion for, to adjourn to a work session, followed by a closed session to discuss the status of personnel and negotiated contract matters.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned from council meeting. Appreciate everybody for coming. We will move right into our work session. Okay, number one. A resolution approving grant funding to area civic and charitable organizations and authorizing the city manager to execute annual service agreements with area civic and charitable organizations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, these are three entities that we have consistently supported for the last several years. Moberly Area Council on the Arts, Senior Americans Multipurpose Center, and the Moberly Community Foundation. So these are their annual service agreements. And the amounts in the packet there, the Council on the Arts, $1,000. Senior Americans Multipurpose Center, $4,000. And Moberly Community Foundation, $1,000. So provided this is still agreeable, and it is in the proposed budget for next year, we would recommend moving forward with these service agreements.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Anybody on council have any questions regarding those service agreements? Anybody have any problem moving those forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move those forward. Number two, selection of a consultant to advise and manage replacement of the city's current telephone system.
I'm going to have Greg fill you in on this side.
Mr. Hodge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in your packets, there's a lengthy memo kind of that was explaining the, the process and all kinds of documentation that I provided, kind of showing, you know, how I approached this, this problem. So it's basically, there's, nobody on staff is, has the expertise to basically evaluate and design process. So we thought it best to. This thing is like in and out. There we go. That's a little better. So we, we thought it best to, to just hire a totally independent entity to, to evaluate, design, and manage this entire process. So the, the RFQ went out, as you saw. I, I selected nine out of the twenty that was originally on the list and got a whopping two responses. One, one, one of them was on time. And, and the second one was, was late. And I just didn't really get a very good feeling about that firm. But the, the firm that we're recommending to, to try to move forward with is Team KC Telecom. They're based in Overland Park, Kansas. It's, it's owned by a woman, woman named Cynthia Farrell. She is very well-versed in the VoIP processes. She's been in the business for twenty-plus years, knows her stuff. I had a pretty lengthy initial conversation with her, and I felt very good about her qualifications. I presented that to additional staff members, including city manager, and all were in agreement after we asked some follow-up questions of her that she would be the best, best fit for what we're trying to get done here. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you all have, questions, comments, what have you, and then try and explain the best that, that I can.
Anybody have any questions for Greg Hodge? What, what was the estimated time that she thought it would take to accomplish all of this? I know she had a pretty high rate per hour, which I, I think this is a good idea. I'm just curious what, what her anticipation was. Did she say?
It's basically as fast as we want the thing to move. She said she has, she has turned some of these projects around in as little as thirty days, and others have taken, you know, a, a year. It just depends on, on the firm. So.
Well, reviewing and, and as far as the budget goes and seeing the, the amount of money that we budget for telephone and, and the old analog stuff that the city still has, we're, we're looking at significant savings, you know, by going a, a system like this. So, you know, I, obviously, the sooner, the, the sooner the better. But definitely needed, definitely needed for sure. Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Number three, a request to authorize the Moberly Fire, Fire Department to purchase fire hoses through Banner Fire Equipment.
Yeah, this is basically part of a program at this point to try to bring the rest of our fire tack hose up to where we have ampedled, or we shouldn't be asking for any of the fire tack hose as an inch and three-quarter for several years, probably at least ten or so. The four-inch hose that's being requested is to start replacing an engine at a time for our supply hoes, which is, there's nobody on the department can tell me when the original four-inch hose that's on our trucks was bought. Average lifespan on the, on fire hose is basically ten to fifteen years, if you're lucky. They've been really lucky. So part of this money that's being allocated for this is through the county ARPA money that was left over from the radio project that was given to the fire departments around the area. And that twenty thousand was what we were using to purchase this.
Okay. Any questions for Chief regarding purchasing of the fire hoses? Okay, Chief. We'll move this one forward to the next council meeting? Good? Okay. Thank you, sir. Let's see. Number four, request to purchase new Glock nine-millimeter handguns for the police department.
So due to the, the lead time from the purchase of the firearms till we receive them is approximately five months. There's a high demand for the firearms, so we're requesting early approval for those. Like I said, estimated time is five months.
Okay. Okay. I know we've had the discussions in the, about several different models, but this is, this is the model that we think is going to be the, the best and, and the least expensive as far as what we want.
Absolutely.
Very good. Any questions for Chief regarding purchase of the handguns? Nope. Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay. We will move this one forward. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Number five, request from the Moberly Area Chamber of Commerce to hold the two thousand twenty-five Christmas Parade and Festival in downtown Moberly on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So the area chamber of commerce is asking permission to hold the Christmas Parade on December thirteenth, starting at three P.M. for the parade. They've also asked to have some parking spaces available through the festival time from December twelfth through the thirteenth. And they also asked to lift the public consumption, alcohol consumption from December thirteenth, ten A.M. to ten P.M. Utilize the fennel complex and as well use the Moberly Parks and Rec parking lot for some parking.
Okay. Any questions regarding this request?
Mr. Mayor, is that, is there anything different than last year? Or is that, do we know? Is that the same?
It's, I believe it's.
It's all the same. Okay.
Exact same. And banners on the pedestrian bridge.
Very good. Any additional questions? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And number six, revised standard agreement for consulting services with McClure on the fennel building construction.
So on this project to, to keep costs down, we did a design contract with McClure and didn't add a, a construction management contract with them. And we were going to do as needed because it was going to be like over thirty thousand for that. So we had some things that have come up on that, like with the HVAC. We knew we would, some changes and stuff like that. And so far, we've got some cost on there for their revisions and their work on that. It's like ninety-seven hundred. So rather than, that's what this piece is for.
Okay. Is there any other expected expenses in this category that you're aware of?
I hope not, but I mean, I.
Nothing foresee.
I, I think we've got everything pretty much addressed. I mean, most of the big things, like we revised some of the ductwork, how they added position was going to be. I, well, we felt low down in the bottom areas, and so that was moved to the upstairs. And then like on some of the plumbing things, and we've done a lot of modifications on that. And I, I feel like we've got all the big things addressed.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Nope. Hearing none. Do we have any objection to moving this one forward? Okay. We will move that one forward. Thank you, Tom. And last, number seven, Miller Family Revocable Living Trust. David Miller built a new hangar at twelve oh five Aviator Lane.
This is just a formal approval of the ground lease for the hangar facilities constructed out there.
Is, have the leases always been that inexpensive?
No, they used to be a lot cheaper.
Seven, what, seventeen, seventeen cents a square foot? Why so cheap?
Well, the, the airports, for example, like it used to be like, years ago, it was a dollar for the lease for thirty years. And so we stepped it up a bit.
You've really made a dramatic improvement.
Yeah, but, no, it's, they, they are minimal leases, you know. I mean, that's, you know, they own the building, and so it's their building. It's just a matter of the footprint the building's on. So you're trying to get more aircraft based there and stuff like that. So I mean, it's not way out of line for an airport of our size.
Okay. Any questions for Tom? Any objections to moving this one forward?
No.
Okay. We will move this one forward. Okay, that is all that we have for the work session this evening. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, we are adjourned from work session. Thank you.